I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled meeting. President and Board of Trustees, the Village of Tinley Park, Cookin, Will County, Illinois, held on Tuesday, March 4, 2025, beginning at 6:24 PM. Everyone, please stand for the purposes.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Brennan?
Present.
Trustee Mahoney?
Present.
Trustee Newer is absent. Trustee Shaw?
Present.
Trustee Sullivan?
Present.
President Clots?
Present. Item one. Is there a motion to consider approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item one. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, is there a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the regular Village Board meeting held on February 18, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item two. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item number three. Received presentation of the Tinley Park Business Spotlight, Dunkin' Donuts and House of Light LLC by President Clots and Clerk O'Connor. Clerk, could you please take the first question?
Sure. Dunkin', located at 7941 West 171st Street, features a variety of hot and iced coffee and tea drinks, as well as breakfast sandwiches, bagels, donuts, and muffins. They are committed to providing high-quality products and excellent service to their customers. The village is pleased to welcome Rich Momsen of Dunkin'.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to everybody for allowing us, myself, my wife Teresa, my daughter Jennifer, and my daughter, other daughter Karen who's not here, to give a little bit of a talk or a background about us. We started in 2008, in our current location in Tinley Park on 171st and 80th Avenue. Dunkin' Donuts has 14,000, over 14,000 locations. But what you might not know is that 99.5% of those locations are franchised. So we really don't have much corporate-owned stores. So we're all basically small businessmen. We, our group, own six stores located predominantly on the southwest side of the suburbs, as well as we also have a location down in Bourbon A. As I said, we started out in 2008 when we were looking for a location. We kind of scouted around the areas, and we landed on the store on 171st and 80th Avenue, inside the strip mall, the Tinley Down Strip Mall. We, from that particular location, then went on to another one in Bourbon A, and then a few others after that. When we first located in Tinley Park, we didn't have a drive-through. So we knew we had to be something different in order to attract and keep customers coming in. So we focused on a couple of different areas. One was customer service, and the other one was community involvement. So when we first started, as I said, without the drive-through, you know, that's a detriment for a business like ours, because everybody wants the convenience of going through a drive-through. So we basically tried to make sure that we knew our customer base, we knew what they wanted, we tried to get them in, we tried to get them out, we tried to get them out of their life, and tried to get everything right. And that's the kind of the focus that we had at the very beginning. You know, to this day, we have regular customers that come in, we know their names, we know what they want, we kind of get it ready, and we kind of move them along. As time went on, we also knew we had to be involved with the communities. We had a knock on the door at 1 o'clock in the morning from Officer Buldivine at Tinley Park Police Department, asking us to get involved with the Cop on the Roof program. So in 2009, we started with Officer Devine doing that. As the years have gone on, our location has been consistently the second or third highest producing revenue for that particular event. The communities got involved and with Bill to make sure that we supported everything that he was doing, and he supported everything that we was doing. So we're very appreciative for that. The other thing that we also tried to do was look around to see if there's anything else that we could do to help. You know, we've been involved in Shake the Cans in our location, Alzheimer's, we did a crayons, comic book for chemo for children to donate comic books to hospitals. We've tried to do all of that as well. We continue to open locations throughout the years, and by 2016, we'd opened our last of our new ones. You know, we were going along, and then 2020 hit when COVID came in, and it put a big hurt into our location, especially in Tinley Park without the drive-through. We didn't, you know, people at that point in time were very afraid to come into buildings. It's just, it's just a fact of life. That particular location probably lost 75% of the business when COVID first hit. And at that point in time, we knew we had to do something, attempt to do something different, and there was a space across the way from where we currently were located to look at, to try and put a drive-through into that building. And with the help of the mayor, the council, the staff especially, we were able to accomplish that in 2022. So in 2022, we moved our location currently across the way, put a drive-through through the building, and was able to gain back all that and more in our particular location. We're very grateful for the help that you guys all provided at that moment in time, and obviously, it helped us tremendously. Our other location is also in the Village of Tinley. It's on 184th and Harlem, inside the gas station, which has also been one of those things that helped us along too. So that's basically our story from when we started. We are very appreciative to have the opportunity to spend just a couple of minutes talking about us. So thank you, guys, all again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have, second one is House of Light LLC, located at 6815 West 167th Street. It's an organization that provides consulting, education, and training services to improve the lives of those who are blind and visually impaired. They promote inclusion for individuals with visual impairment by engaging them in society, whether commercial, institutional, or educational spaces. We are pleased to welcome Sierra Dockery, founder of House of Light.
Hello. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. I don't have my team or my family, but I want to say thank you to the village. House of Light, you started really great. By talking about the background, so I am a proud Red Bird. I graduated from Illinois State University, then I went to Governor's State, and then finished up my degree with the MBA from DePaul University. So I have been here for a long time. With that being said, how did we get started? I'm gonna be very transparent. I am a product of our special needs. I could not read or write from kindergarten to fourth grade. So when growing up, it was like, what do you want to be? I said, ooh, I want to be a teacher, right? Well, what do teachers do? We teach the world. We teach, we help those kids that struggle. So I went to Illinois State. I was not your typical student. Illinois State said, hey, you haven't declared a major, so you need to either get a general study degree, or we're gonna kick you out. I said, hold on, wait, we spent a lot of money to be here. So I had an advisor that said, hey, have you thought about going into special ed? I said, I can get a degree in special ed? He was like, yeah. And so vision, deaf and hard of hearing, and learning behavior was the options. I said, wait, all those kids have teachers that do this? He was like, yes, so we're gonna let you sit for a semester and take all these classes from deaf and hard of hearing, learning and behavior, and vision. And I sat in the classroom with the full room of soon-to-be ophthalmologists and optometrists, and we had to learn everything about the eye. I said, wait, hold on, wait. There's kids that go to school that are blind, and the teacher said, so you don't know the story about Ray Charles or Stevie Wonder? I said, I mean, they sing, but they have teachers. Ray Charles went to the Perkins School for the Blind in Boston. That's where his mother sent him. And there's a whole slew of teachers like myself. I graduated Illinois State in 2010, and my grandmother begins to lose her sight. I said, wait, huh? I'm the baby of the family. My mother said, you are now her P.O.A. over her medical. It's one, two, three, four years. She did not pass until 2016. She did not lose her vision, because I ensured she had everything she needed. So for me, it started with the elderly, and it started at home. My family is from Tinley Park. My family was born and raised in this area. I went to Hillgrass, so I did not go to Tinley Park, but I did go to Hillgrass. And so I was like, wait, what? I can do this and then make a living? They're like, yeah. So I went into public school, did public school for five years. I was told that I was never gonna make a difference in the children who were blind or visually impaired. I said, okay, started the business. Just six months ago, I got a call from a local church here in Tinley Park and said, hey, we have blind members of our church. Is there a way you can make us some Braille bingo cards? I said, so who? She's like, Bill. I said, come to the office tomorrow. I'll have them waiting for you all. And they're like, you can do that right now? I said, oh, we have a machine that does it instantly on the spot. And from that day forward, I have been providing services to children and adults who are blind. My staff is blind. The one that did my website is also blind. So when I say I only work in the community, I hire the community. So now I'm asking for the help, because now we have all these kids that are graduating high school, college, and yet they have nowhere to go, because again, people think their disability is their inability. And I always tell my kids the opposite. Your disability does not define who you are. So because of that, I am glad to be back here at Tinley Park and have our business here, because we are partnering up with Ike and Dream Center right here off of Harlem to allow us to expand our horizons and provide job training for children who are blind and visually impaired in this city, in the Village of Tinley Park. So thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, great story there.
Yes.
Thank you for, thank you for making a difference for all the people you help.
Thank you. Very nice.
Next, we have item number four. Is there a motion to consider appointing Samantha Ryan to the position of 911 dispatcher?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Samantha has five years of dispatching experience with two local ambulance companies. She is an experienced professional accustomed to working with emergencies in a high-stress environment. She is familiar with CAD systems and radio communications. Please consider appointing Samantha to the position of 911 dispatcher, effective March 10, 2025. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item four. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Is there a motion to consider appointing Megan Nurr to the position of 911 dispatcher?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Megan has 10 years of related experience, including four years of dispatching experience with smaller municipalities, and three years of police records experience. She is experienced with 911 operations and is lead certified. Please consider appointing Megan to the position of 911 dispatcher, effective March 10, 2025. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item five. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Item number six. Is there a motion to consider appointing Joseph Zavani to the position of maintenance technician?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Joseph has 20 years of experience, including 10 years of carpentry and construction, and 10 years of commercial driving experience. He has completed OSHA courses and has received various equipment and operator certifications. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item six. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item number seven. Consider appointing Catherine Brand as a commissioner to the sister cities.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Catherine's not here, is she? Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item seven. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item number eight. May I have a motion to consider approval of the following consent agenda items?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Consent agenda items have been publicly posted and available for review according to the Illinois Opens Meeting, Open Meetings Act. Would anyone from the board like any of these items removed from the agenda? Let's the record reflect there are none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item eight. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine. Trustee Dennis Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we consider adopting Resolution 2025-R-026, rescinding support and consent to the filing of Class 7B application for the development at 9551 and 9555 183rd Street, which is the Marriott Residence Inn and Courtyard Hotels.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you. At the request of the property owner, this resolution rescinds support for the Cook County Class B, 7B, property tax incentives for the properties at 7, 951, sorry, excuse me, 9551 and 9555 183rd Street, which were previously supported under Resolutions 2022-R-087 and The developer plans to complete the project but will not meet Cook County's requirements to obtain the incentive. This item was heard at the committee of the whole meeting just held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Dennis. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public on item nine? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item nine. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item 10. Trustee Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2025-R-020, authorizing an appropriation of up to $2,510,000 of motor fuel tax funds for the fiscal year 2026 pavement management program resurfacing project.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Consider approving an appropriation of up to $2,510,000 of motor fuel tax funds for the fiscal year 2026 pavement management program resurfacing project. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held prior to this meeting, and this resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item 10. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item 11. Trustee Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2025-R-21, approving a contract between the Village of Tinley Park and P.T. Farrow Construction Company for the 2025 pavement program, pavement management program, resurfacing, resurfacing project.
I'll second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Catherine.
Thank you. Consider awarding a contract to P.T. Farrow Construction Company in the amount of $3,799,944 and 03 cents. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held prior to this meeting, and the resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item 11. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item 12. Trustee Sullivan?
Yes. Consider adopting Resolution 2025-R-025, approving change order number two to the 2024 pavement management program resurfacing project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Consider approving change order number two with Iroquois Paving Corp. in the amount of $200,000. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Kelly. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item 12. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item 13. Trustee Brady?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consider adopting Resolution 2025-R-023, approving a contract between the Village of Tinley Park and the City Escape Garden and Design LLC for landscape bed maintenance.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Billy.
Consider approving a contract with City State Garden and Design LLC in the amount of $168,396. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item 13. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item 14. Clerk O'Connor, you want to take it?
Okay. It's a first. Consider adopting Resolution 2025-R-024, approving a contract between the Village of Tinley Park and City Escape Garden and Design LLC for landscape maintenance.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Nancy?
Everyone's. Okay. Second. Consider approving a contract with City Escape Garden and Design LLC in the amount of $274,239.36. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting prior, held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Item 14. Or I'm sorry. 14. Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item 14. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have item 15. Trustee Mahoney, you want to take that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we consider adopting Resolution 2025-R-022, approving a contract between the Village of Tinley Park and City Escape Garden and Design LLC for landscape planters and beautification.
I'll second it.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you. Consider approving a contract with City Escape Garden and Design LLC in the amount of $194,994. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Are there any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item 15. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, can I have a motion, please, to move item 18 up next?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. So we moved item 18 up. Are there, anyone from the public here to comment? Let's the record reflect there are none. Item 16. Received comments from staff. How about from the right?
Just really quickly, I'll note Jason and likely Lakota will be here for an update on the comprehensive plan at the next meeting. So lots of good progress has been made on that, and a lot of input from the community. So we'll have an update for you guys at the next meeting.
I appreciate you setting up the individual calls with them too, so.
Yep.
Working within our schedule, so I appreciate that.
Yep. There's a lot of coordination going on there with Jason and Lakota, with the board, with the planning commission, with the UCC, so, um, they've been working really hard to get elected official input, public input, and.
No, they're great, just because we all have worked full-time too, so they were great work in our schedules, so much appreciated.
No problem.
Thank you. Uh, next we have seventeen, receive comments from the board. Mr. Brady?
I'd just like to wish everybody, uh, uh, show up for our St. Patrick's Day parade, Sunday. Kickoff time is at one o'clock. Weather at the moment, sounds good. Looks good. Come on out and join us for a fun-filled day.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like something too. I would like to, again, just what Bill said too, I hope everyone has a great time on Sunday. Um, and then just wanted to share a couple of events from, and it's gonna be wonderful events, all the businesses along Old Park Avenue, they're all having great things, but I did want to point out a couple of things from, our Veterans Commission mentioned, we do have the Tinley VFW, they're having a St. Patrick's Day party. Uh, they're at one-hundred-seventy-second Mill Park Avenue, for anyone who doesn't know. Their party does start at 1:00 PM. They are featuring the Band of Brothers Bagpipe Band and the Blackbird Irish Dancers, and they are catering corned beef sandwiches from Winston's Market. And then we also have our other, uh, veteran organization, the Tinley Park American Legion, located at one-seven-four-two-three, sixty-seventh Court. They have Bagpipers Stockyard Kilty Band and Blackbird Academy Dancers, and they will also be serving corned beef sandwiches from Winningham Meat, so if you want to have a battle of the corned beef sandwiches and let them know who you think is best, because they each think that they're, is the best, so. Hope everyone has a great time on Sunday, and I hope the weather stays nice.
Anyone else have any? Mr. Shaw?
Not today.
Uh, just a couple of things, really, in passing, uh, at a couple of events we've had recently, I've run into a few times, uh, local, uh, Army recruiter, um, and, um, the, uh, the military overall, but in particular the Army has, uh, suddenly had a, a big uptick in, uptick in recruiting, so, uh, his business is going gangbusters. Pat and I were talking to him for a little while, and, uh, um, Pat, I'm, I'm roping you in on something. Pat, given his role, has, has sometimes sworn in, uh, new recruits, uh, and we talked about, uh, next time he has a batch of new recruits from Tinley Park, come in here and, and actually do the swearing-in ceremony, um, here at the village board, thought that would be a, um, a really nice, uh, event to kind of, um, highlight, uh, service, uh, as, as well as, um, you know, kind of, uh, getting them out there and give the village manager something to do. I, I, I had a question.
A roast?
I had a question from our, um, committee, the whole, uh, and it was on our consent agenda tonight, um, about the stormwater management program. And I, it's kind of for our village attorney here, and I'm not anticipating that you have an answer right now, all right? But it was, it was mentioned, I hadn't really thought of this until it was brought up tonight, but, um, we do have, uh, the mental health center in town, which by state, uh, um, legislation, uh, has been completely exempted from all village ordinances, and the village, um, has no oversight, um, authority on that at all. But it sounded to me like, from the IEPAs perspective, that doesn't exempt us from liability if something is going on there, um, which seems like a big loophole, right? So I, I thought maybe it was something we could, we could look into there.
We can absolutely look into that.
Because I, I read, I read that legislation when it was passed, even, you know, even though it went by lightning speed, um, and as I saw it, I did see specifically about what, um, uh, exempted, took away home rule, uh, uh, authority from the village and took away oversight, uh, ability, but I didn't see anything in there about, uh, removing any sort of liability, uh, from the village for anything, right?
Well, I would say arguably, just, and, you know, I, I'll have to do some research into this, but arguably, if, if the village has no authority over it and has no, uh, ability to enforce any ordinances over it, I can't see how the village would be held liable for anything that's happening on there.
I, I would agree, and that would be a, a logical conclusion.
But the law isn't always logical.
Yeah, exactly. There's, there's something known as unfunded mandates, where the state.
Correct.
Legislature says, you will do this, how are you gonna pay for it?
Correct.
That's your problem.
That's definitely something we can look into.
I could see them taking away our authority to control something, yet still leaving us on the hook for it if it went bad.
Yeah, that's something we can definitely look into and see what the IEPA, you know, also, I, you know, I, it begs the question of what is the IEPA doing to monitor the site?
Exactly. And, and all those requirements, uh, that John and his team, uh, are on top of throughout the year, and Robinson Engineering, um, I, that's why I asked about unincorporated, uh, areas of the county and, uh, areas that are not under home rule authority, so. Just want to make sure that, uh, there's no exposure to the village for that.
Absolutely. I will take a look into that, and, uh, we'll get you guys an answer.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, I don't know how we could be responsible for it, because if you remember, the EPA called Public Works and asked to pump all the contaminated water from the basement and the tunnels to, where they want to pump that into, John?
Our sanitary sewers.
Yeah, so the EPA themselves wanted to pump all the, the contam- contaminated water into our, our sanitary, which would violate the NWRD Act, correct?
Sir.
Yeah, I, my concern is on, unless and until we see something in writing that explicitly, um, removes liability from the village, then it's questioned, and if something bad happens, um, you know how lawsuits go, they, they just go for the, the deep pockets. So, and it's within the four corners of the, the village, so, um, God forbid something bad happens, like somebody falls off a building or something like that, it's within the, the limits of. Yeah, i- it's within the corporate limits of the village, and, you know, someone say, well, I don't see, I don't see you legally, um, exempted from liability, so lawsuit goes up here.
Well, I mean, there are, there are certain laws, like the Tort Immunity Act, that do give you guys, you know, some levels of exemption. Um, obviously, if you generally have no control over the site, and you have no permitting authority or anything like that, you know, the argument that we would make, if there was nothing in the law that was explicit that said that the village is exempt, obviously, one of the arguments we would make is, well, how can we control something and prevent something from happening when our control was literally taken away from us by the state legislature? We have no power over this site. So, if you don't have the power to, to permitting and inspections and control the progress of the construction to make sure that it's compliant with both local laws as well as state laws, then I can't see how there would be any liability, but it is a good question, and it is something we'll look into.
Sounds good.
That wasn't part of my comment, but to add to that, we received the call from the Cook County Department of Public Health, and then they put it in an email to the village stating that there's going to be major repercussions to, uh, the park district for abandoning wells without permits when there's open loss. And so, they put an email out and said Tuesday, their last Tuesday, there would be, uh, major fines levied against them, and their exact words were major repercussions, because you have, when you're abandoning wells, you have to have someone from whatever county you're in be there to witness, to make sure it's properly done, you have to, you have to tremmy ground it all the way from the bottom, all the way up in hundred-foot lifts, to make sure that you don't mess with the aquifers, and then, he wouldn't call the building department back, and then when he finally got a hold of them, said, oh yeah, we, we, we found some records now that, um, we believe that they abandoned it properly. So, that's kind of the problem with the EPA. Clerk O'Connor?
Yeah, real, and, and I'll be brief. As far as the wells are concerned, part of that has to do with, um, the nineteen ninety-five and nineteen ninety-six loss that are still open to this day, and why they were never closed is because how close they were to one of the wells. And that was, um, I believe their biggest fear is that it contaminated, that loss contaminated, because the lateral water migration contaminated that well. Um, and as far as oversight from the IEPA, um, until the park district enters the, what's called the SR, SR, uh, the SRP, the State Remediation Program, there is no real oversight from the IEPA unless it's self-reported, um, by the park district. You know, they really, they may send them a report here and there, but until they enter, until they physically fill out the forms and enter the SRP, there's no oversight from the IEPA. So at this moment, there is no oversight from anyone. Just, and, um, I'll be really straight, I've had a really great relationship with the US EPA, um, specifically someone in particular, and he was the one who told me that. That was the information passed to him. He was also the one who told me that, before we were stripped of home rule, that we should hire consultants, the village should hire a consultant as an overseer of the development, or of the cleanup, just to ensure that everything was being done properly. And this is coming from the US EPA, because they know how companies are, they love to take shortcuts, and those were his exact words to me, and he said, i- i- as long as the village can afford it, you really should hire someone to oversee that project of your own, that's completely independent of the park district, and that way you know it's being done properly, because the IEPA really has no oversight of it. So that's just a little FYI. The other thing, completely different subject, March seventeenth starts early voting, um, here at the village and in Will County at the library, I believe it is, yes, at the Frankfurt Public Library. Not going to go into all the times, visit the, the village website, and it gives you all the dates and times and locations of where you can early vote, between March seventeenth and March thirty-first. Thanks, that's it.
You're welcome, thank you. I just, I wanted to address the, um, unfortunately, the constant spin from, uh, legislators who actually were the ones that tried bringing a Racino here. Could you put, not, not the video, just the slides? I'm gonna skip the video. So again, just to repeat, um, we were. I took office January, or May first, two thousand seventeen, as a trustee. I didn't become mayor until May first of two thousand twenty-one, and if you look at the bottom yellow block date, it's the second presentation that was brought to us in executive session, January twenty-third of two thousand eighteen. This was the schematic that was brought to the board. The only ones on the board was myself and trustee Bill Brady, which was brought by Vanderburg, who, they started passing legislation for a race, they started discussing, they gave approval to the developer, which nobody from the board knew, in May of two thousand seventeen, and you could see in this rendering that they keep spinning and saying that this board, we brought the Racino here, is, is a complete farce. And it all comes from, anyone from the public knows, uh, Bob Rita and Senator Hastings. Um, there's a reason that Governor Pritzker asked Senator Hastings to resign, uh, for his alleged, uh, spousal abuse of his wife, and also Bob Rita also was, um, was all over the news for alleged spousal abuse. Those are the ones blaming, uh, this board. Can you go to the next one? So if you look at the circle, when the village was trying to obtain the, the mental health center and the vill- the manager's office was working with, uh, CMS, Central Management Services. According to the Surplus Property Act, they cannot legally give property away to anyone without three appraisals. You need three appraisals of what the land is worth. And so, the, the value of the land was four-point-five million, and now they say, well, we saved the taxpayers' money, we got it for a dollar. Well, you really didn't, because the money for the sale of that property went to help people with mental health, so what happened is, all the proceeds from the sale didn't really go to the state, it went to help people with mental health that actually need the money, right? So, you didn't save the state money, you hurt people that, that need help. But then, when Bob Rita gets involved in Hastings, because his daughter is Ashley Rabino on the park board, and also works for the, the state of Illinois, she was with Department of Corrections, uh, but once we discussed that and showed the public that she works under CMS, Department of Corrections is under it, then they moved her to the IDNR. Um, so that's where she works now, but there's never been a post on the switching of the jobs, that's just how they move jobs around. But they lifted the Surplus Property Act, which is, which is legislation in the state of Illinois, only for this property. So every other, every other municipality that has, that has some dump waste site left in their town by the state of Illinois, they're stuck with it, and in order to get rid of it, they have to have three appraisals, but in Tinley Park, they exempted even state Surplus Property Act. Besides the zoning, the, uh, home rule authority, um, just so they could give it to their friends and family, which they did, Rabino's neighbor, who was, uh, Mike Maloney, who we'll be, uh, be discussing more about him next week. They're paying him eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month to run this property, and he has absolutely no experience to be running a project of this, of this magnitude, which you'll see next weekend, uh, yeah, that'll be next week, you'll get to see his, the inexperience of what he's doing to our community. Can you do the next one, please? And so here's the grant, PTAL qualified school districts. This was the invest, if you look at the bottom, under synopsis is introduced, it, they amended the Invest in Kids Act, so you look at the yellow highlights, it's Hastings and Rita were the sponsors, they took it, a bill that was to invest in your children, they gutted it, and then they threw all their horse track racing garbage in there. Can you go to the next one, please? The board shall issue organization licenses limited to standardbred racing to a racetrack located in one of the following townships of Cook, Bloom, Bremen, Cayman, Orland, Rich, Thornton, or Worth. They put this in there, they passed it with working with Vanderburg, when, again, I was just a trustee, I had no authority, I had no power, it was Vanderburg's board. And to this day, they keep saying, as Maloney would say, if, when he has his teleprompter, there will be no racetrack or racing, or whatever he says, and the words about, um, yeah. So, why, why haven't they removed this from the legislation? That's the question you should be asking them, because what they plan on doing, is they plan on putting it in there themselves if they get control of the village. That's why the, the, the horse tra- racing is still in there. They keep saying that, we did not want this here, but they introduced all the language, the village cannot introduce language, uh, legislation, they did, and they still keep it in there for themselves, and there's a reason. You go to the next one, please? May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, again, I'm a trustee, Bob Rita files House Amendment Two to allow a Racino in Orland Township. June first, two thousand nineteen, Bob Rita's made chief sponsor. June first, Bob Rita files House Amendment Three. June second, Hastings has added as the chief sponsor from the Senate. June second, two thousand nineteen, Rita and Hastings pass Senate Bill zero-six-ninety to add a Racino to the Invest in Kids Act. And if you look at the bottom left, it's at the nine-minute and thirty-one-second mark of the, uh, video that's on the village website. It took them all of three days to add the Racino language into the Invest in Kids Act, but they didn't help, they didn't do anything to invest in your kids, they left that trailer bill sitting, and that's what these ge- that's what these legislators do. They create these, these bills, they don't do anything with them, and they let them sit, so when you're sleeping, like they did with the Unsafe Act that they passed at, what, five, six in the morning, where everyone was sleeping? They use these bills and they sit on the shelf, they, they get dust, and then when time comes, they wipe the dust off, they gut it, nobody knows, Invest in Kids Act, who in the world would look through a bill that says Invest in Kids Act and think it would have anything different than invest in your children in, in the state of Illinois? That's what the Bob Rita's and the Hastings do, and that's why Governor Pritzker's asked them to resign. They're not ethical people, they have a long history of, of shenanigans. And they took the money away from people that need it, which was with mental health, took money away from kids who needed it, and they put a, they put a, a Racino in there. So it only took them three days. So when they did this little funky transfer in two, in February of, um, two thousand twenty-two, when Hastings, Senator Hastings went to, uh, the village manager, Pat Carr, to try to extort me, to endorse him for his election, and it didn't work, that's when all this started, and then Bob Rita followed right behind. But why haven't they changed this legislation and removed from Senate Bill zero-six-nine-oh, Invest in Kids Act? Why haven't they removed the Racino? Because they still plan on putting it there if they get control of your village. That's why it's still in there, it only takes them three days. Next. And then here's the other thing, the, the, this is from September seventeenth of two thousand nineteen. This is where village manager Dave DeMeyer presented an update on Illinois Racing Board meetings, which were attended by the village attorneys and himself. The board agendas are prepared and authorized by the mayor of the municipality, the village manager, the trustees, you cannot put agenda items on the agenda without the mayor approving them. Committee of the holes. The mayor pro tems do the committee of the holes, not the trustees, and whoever is the pro tem, usually, he could, he could pull, the mayor pro tem could pull any item from the cow that he wishes, he can add any item that he wishes. The mayor of, of the village board meetings, I could add any item that I want, I don't need board approval, the border, the board cannot remove an item from the board on me. They did all of this, they put this on here when Vanderburg was in charge, and they, he sent the, two attorneys he paid, and, and the village manager to go down to this meeting. So when they say that we brought this here, it's an outright lie, because we had absolutely nothing to do with the start of this. This all started in May of two thousand seventeen, when Vanderburg, Brian Youngker, Senator Hastings, and, um, Bob Rita concocted this whole Racino thing to put in here for their friends. They didn't get the Racino, but what they did get is their neighbors getting eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. And then the last thing, again, he still has not apologized, I wish he would apologize, for being disrespectful to our fire department. Wish the police department would have stayed around to see, uh, how disrespectful Matt Walsh is. Can you play that clip of Matt's comments on what he thinks of our, our fire department, please? And before you hit play, standing to his left is Mike Maloney, standing to the left where the arrow is is Danny Flores, standing to his left is Tracy Sullivan, and standing behind her is Antonio Rabino, as Matt Walsh insults our fire department.
The fire department's part-time, they're trying to get full-time, but with very inexperienced.
Play it one more time.
The fire department's part-time, they're trying to get full-time, but with very inexperienced.
So that's how, that's how they treat our fire department, and these are the people that want to take your village. And on a good note, again, I want to thank the board and staff for freezing, uh, taxes for two years in a row. In April, Dan, Chick-fil-A will be opening at one-hundred-and-sixty-third and Harlem, correct?
Yeah, we don't have a specific date yet, but it's looking like April, early April.
And then, uh, congratulations to staff, and, um, um, really want to thank, uh, several people, John Urbanski, uh, Mike Coleman, Tony Boar, um, from Cullen, and, uh, Wegman, for how hard they worked for, to tear T hat, to tear a building down. You want to see how a building's torn down and built? You don't go to one-hundred-and-eighty-third and Harlem, you go to, uh, downtown Har- uh, Harmony Square. So John, Mike Coleman, uh, Tony Boar and Wegman, want to thank you very much for all the hard work you guys did. And Donna, she was there, you know, organizing to put the pictures back up today, so thank you, Donna. They opened today at four PM, is that correct, John?
Yes, sir.
Soft opening? And then, Donna, when will the ribbon cutting be for that successful bu- building?
Monday, March seventeenth, at five-thirty PM.
Thank you. Uh, so I hope to see everyone there. And then last, we have item nineteen, can I have a motion to adjourn through executive session to discuss the following? A, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee. hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, we will not be coming back.